Oh, one, sorry. That's that meeting that clock needs adjusting. Thank you for coming to the special study session. We're going to be talking about two items today. Some information about ADUs and JADUs as well with information from the state and the planning department. And then there's also going to be a comment on our CIP, which is our improvement program for this year. So we're going to take the comments because I think most people are here for on the on the study on the planning stuff. So why don't we start with a roll call and we'll get on with it?
Councilmember Holland?
Here.
Councilmember DeGolia? Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hawkins-Manwellian?
Nope, she's not here. You can see that.
Absent. Mayor Whitmer?
Here. Okay.
We also need to.
Oh, ask for the there are two finding. There's a finance committee and planning commission. We need to take attendance of. Planning Commission for the first part.
Commissioner Palito?
No, no planning.
Commissioner Lerner?
She's absent.
Absent. Commissioner Ranserick?
Here.
Vice Chair Liam?
Vice Chair Liam is also absent.
And Chair Lee?
Here.
Okay. All right, we're going to move to public comments right now. So public comments, you can they have to be the ones at the beginning of the meeting must be on the topics that are on the agenda. However, you can speak then, or you can speak when the agenda is being opened up and we'll listen to you. It'll be three minute comments. Okay, and we'll we'll hold that because we have kind of a tight time on these study sessions. So are there any public comments when people wish to speak at the moment? Yes, come on forward. And if you could grab a microphone and tell us who you are and where you're from and.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all the volunteers of the council and the planning commission, the people that are doing their job. We appreciate it. I'm an Atherton resident. I've been an Atherton resident. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, can you just say your name, please?
Fifty years. My name is Gerda Ungerman.
Okay, great.
And I just am here because I noticed that you would like to have a resident friendly ADU program. And I think it's not very friendly at the moment with a number of items. And I would hope that you would make it more friendly. And one item that I'm concerned about is the tree zones by the ADU. The assessment is to have every tree on an acre property inventoried and catalyzed, not affecting the ADU necessarily, but the whole acre as an inventory. And it costs three to $5,000 just to have an acre of trees that are not going to affect the ADU. So that is one item. Another item is the length of the building timeline. I think it should be opened and extended due to the trucking, due to the back orders. If you want to get something done, it would be very proficient to do that. The other area, of course, is eliminating some of these permits. The permit cost is outrageous. If you really want to have a friendly ADU program here in Atherton and have a lot of the residents build them, make it friendly. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments before we start the discussion? No, not seeing any. So we're going to go into item number one, which is the planning update. Planning will make a presentation and they have a PowerPoint. And and then at that time, before the council starts talking about it, since it's a study session, I'd like to take public comments at that time so that we can assess when we're talking about it with, you know, versus the comments that you have. So we can bring those into our discussion too. So if that's okay with you. So please be ready after the presentation here. Thank you. Song?
Thank you, Mayor Whitmer, council members and plan commissioners. In September 2022, the governor signed into law AB 2221 and AB 2097 that imposed new laws that limit the ability to regulate accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. Many of the updates that are required for the ordinance as a result of the passage of AB 2221.
Yeah, yeah, put it in front of your face there.
Make sure it's on. Okay.
And back in January of 20, January 25th of 2023, the Plan Commission held a study session on the ADU ordinance. And a variety of topics were introduced at this meeting, including internal connections, kitchen definitions, trees, efficiency units, garages, sidewalks, et cetera. During this meeting, there was a variety of comments that were provided, including consideration of waiving ADU fees, privacy noise as important issues, onsite parking for ADUs, providing flexibility on entrances for ADUs, providing some flexibility in the kitchen design and providing examples of how other agencies have defined kitchens. And the minutes of the Plan Commission study session are provided as attachment five in the packet. After the Plan Commission study session, staff reviewed the kitchen definition from other local agencies and put together a color-coded plain language ordinance. The highlights are in yellows are those that are mandated by the state and the highlights and turquoise are those that the town has some authority. This was provided in attachment one, and there was a revised attachment one that was provided. The purpose of this document was to keep track of what was required versus what was allowed, just to kind of simplify all the state laws. Staff can go through the draft ordinance language and we requested the Plan Commission to the council provide some direction on some of the policy issues. There's several questions and these questions have been integrated into the draft ordinance language. So as we go through the draft ordinance language, then we can stop and talk about some of these questions. John Johnston from Menlo Fire is here this afternoon and he can help provide some information about fire safety as they relate to trees and privacy and so forth. So here are some of the questions that was also provided in the staff report. To frame these policy questions, staff is requesting that the city council and Plan Commission talk about the policy question, the issues, but also think about how we can make it as much of a ministerial process as possible and to try to limit the timeframe so that it can be 60 days or less if possible. And one of the challenges is if it has to go to Plan Commission, then that extend the timeout in terms of how long it would take for an ADU to be adopted. So staff is requesting that the council and the Plan Commission discuss these policy issues and provide some direction to staff. Once we receive direction, staff will prepare a draft ordinance for the commission and then for the council. And then upon adoption, we will send it to HCD for comment. Staff is happy to answer any questions that you have. I'm happy to transition to the draft language if the Plan Commission and council would like. Mayor would be happy to follow your lead.
What did you want to go through your questions?
Questions, yeah.
In that manner and that way, I mean, you can go through with your introduction. But if you have these questions, you're saying, look, we want input on these specific things. Then I think then we should come back to this policy question chart. And then one by one, listen to comments with regards to, let's say, the tree protection. Or can the arborist do this? That's part of the tree protection, I would think. But yes, I think if you if you want that data, I think we should go through it that way as opposed to just let it go. People talking all over the place.
So when he when he brings up the color-coded document attachment one, the policy questions that will show on the screen are integrated into that.
Okay, so he's going to take up what we had in the staff report.
As they go, as you go through that document.
All right, okay.
Stop and answer.
Yeah, get feedback from the council to talk about it as you're talking about the particular issue.
Okay, we'll see how that works. Okay, we may have to come back to this.
Okay.
Can everyone see that? The staff report, is that right?
I'm going through the draft ADU ordinance language and we'll go through one by one if you'd like.
Is the printed one more updated than the one we were given? The one on the screen is more updated than the one in the packet. Okay, and that this one is a printout of that, correct? All right, thank you.
That's why I put my comments in. Off to share with you.
Make that full screen so I don't have zoom in a little bit.
Thank you.
So the first item is that ADUs need to be allowed in both single family and multifamily.
And some of these will be really easy because it's state law and there's really no discretion.
Right, well, why don't you start out with the J, the under under 800 feet or under that there's no rules apply, right?
Yes, so for an eight.
We should make that clear right off the bat so that in case any of the people had questions on, if you want to build something and it's 800 square feet, it's done. You don't even it's a ministerial thing. Now, there may be, if planning has to do stuff, then we need to charge that off. Taxpayers can't give them a gift, but so there may be permit supply and things like that, but right?
Yes, so for an 800 square foot ADU, there are no limitations except for a four-foot side and rear setback and then a height limit for detached ADUs of of 16 feet.
Right.
And so this is a completely ministerial process. And so the tree protection ordinance wouldn't apply because that transitions into a discretionary process.
Okay, I think it's important to point out too that that is state mandated. We didn't have anything, any call on that. So one of the things about the all the yellow area is a state passed this law that we have to comply with, or they come in and help us.
But we can make it stricter if we want.
Right.
Right, we have to do what's right for our residents.
Well, we can't make it stricter, right? We have to the we can make, we have to take the minimum of the yellow of all the yellow lines. And then we can have more flexibility above 800 square feet.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I understand that. So that's that's essentially what we're going to talk about. But I just wanted to make it clear to the people in the audience that 800 square feet, anything goes.
Right, including being in front of the the front of the house.
Just going to bring that up, the front setback. That there's no front setback requirement.
Right, and there's no tree ordinance supplying.
I think it would be helpful to go through it all the way through rather than.
I just, you know, I mean, even with an 800 square foot unit, there's no front setback.
The the 800 square foot ADU, the 800 square foot state regulated ADU can be within the front yard setback.
Within the front yard setback.
So within the front yard, so there's no setback in the front.
It can be right on the curb.
Well, that's what I that's my interpretation of it, that it could be like right on the front property line on the curb.
Yes, right on the front property.
Not a garage or anything attached to.
Four, four feet from the property line.
Okay.
That's the side.
Side.
Side and rear is four feet, front has no.
Front is nothing.
But but let's go through this methodically rather than.
Crazy.
It it is.
Sorry.
Yeah, I I agree with you. I agree with you. The place is going to look terrible. By the way, okay, let's go through it. We're happy to follow your direction.
So just going through multiple accessory dwelling units are multifamily. Maybe I can skip over through some of this and go to some of the blue ones. So the first one, and this is policy question number eight, is should there be more ADUs allowed on lots of two acres or more? And if so, should they be deed restricted? And then if they should be restricted, for how long?
So I'm just this this was an idea that has been discussed at council quite a bit. I think Councilmember DeGolia brought it up some time ago, and I think we all kind of went along with it. Kind of conceptually, if property is over two acres, then, you know, maybe why not? I mean, I think we'll all regret it if we allow that to go through.
Well, I think I'm not crazy over two personally. And if we're going to have that over two acres and have it, I would then insist that one be deed restricted. And the owner must have occupancy of one of those units. I don't care if it's the big house or the ADU, but we can't just have the whole property, you know, full of three different renters. Or it could be rented by one family that's using all three, but you can't subdivide. I don't, you know, I don't think it's fair to have have an property with a with a ton of rake renters on it.
Be four units.
Four units, yeah, right.
So the couple of things on the on the idea of two ADUs, that would allow us to do some more flexibility to to grant the authority to have two ADUs, we could do things like require setback and things like that if they wanted to. So it allows us to have a little more flexibility. If we provide anything we provide above standard, we can then come in with more acceptable restrictions. It also has to clarify things in terms of later on when we get to things like, does that require three different PG&E connections? And three different, you know, what are the what are the infrastructure requirements associated with that? So and that and then we'll also get to parking later on, which is one of my hot buttons. But but the idea being that if we get if we go for this, then there's more detail that we need underneath that in terms of specifications of what we can drive. That could mean that the person says, forget it, I'm going to go for one ADU and I don't want a setback. That could be the outcome.
Yeah.
And and following on your three gas hookups, would these three structures or four individual units have their individual mailing addresses?
Yeah, they would have to have that.
Requirements, one of the requirements is is to have their own address.
Well, I think if we're going to have multiple, then we need to have some restrictions on it to make it less desirable if that's what we want. I don't know if that's what we want, but you know, that's what the council needs to say. But I I'm not crazy about it, and it seems like Elizabeth isn't crazy about it. So I don't know how everybody else feels in the council.
You need to turn your mic on, please.
It might or might not have a separate address, but that's a different issue.
Yeah.
I I think the objective when the council brought this up was on larger lots, there may be an opportunity to have that second ADU. And if you're going to allow that second ADU, it's not going to at present qualify for the floor area exemption that you provide the first ADU up to 1,200 square feet. But you could incentivize that second ADU by offering that property owner some square footage exemption for that second ADU on the larger lots in exchange for it being deed restricted, which provides the town a number in our annual report to HCD. It also could provide us the flexibility to have a different setback allowance for that.
Just for the second ADU, but for both.
For both of any.
Right, right.
So rather than comment up there, second ADU can have greater setbacks. That that's not, I don't, that's more limited than we need. If if I think if we were to allow a second ADU, that I think is what you're saying, then we should, we could require all the ADUs to be at least a 10-foot setback to have to have our setbacks, whatever they are.
Right.
That that would be compelling.
If if they take advantage of that, otherwise.
They don't have to take advantage of it.
The 800 square foot ADU can still be within four feet.
If they want one ADU and limit it to 800 square feet.
Right.
But if they want an ADU more than 800 square feet, the code already says it has to use our setback.
Right.
And if we were allowing a second ADU on properties that are greater than two acres, then they'd have to agree to our setbacks on all their ADUs.
Right, right. That would be a good, that would be a good trade off.
Diana, do you have any input on two two per lot?
I like the idea of of tying it to something like Rick is suggesting.
Okay, Stacy?
I think we're assuming they're building both ADUs at the same time. So I think the language needs to be careful that if someone's building one ADU and then later a second ADU, we obviously can't ask them to retroactively change their setbacks. So I don't know. That's like minutia of language.
Good point, because then we have the advantage of the setback requirement for both. Good point.
What about the?
Which he was referring to, the fact that what this two on two on one site would be have to be at the same time or else we don't get the advantage of being able to say then the the better setback. Because they're they're building their first one at 800 square feet, four feet. Right, and then they come in and say, well, you better. You theoretically, yeah.
But what about the proprietor needs to be there or have residents there? He can travel, obviously, but.
Oh, the owner occupancy stuff.
Yeah, such as like in an SB nine lot split, one of the units must be lived in by the owner.
Well, why would that be?
Why would you want to have all these rental units in a two-acre thing if you're the neighbor, right? And no one's there to manage it?
Yeah, 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 it'd be interesting to see. Yeah.
I want to not see it, so.
Well, there are some state guidelines or state laws a little bit further down in this presentation that does address owner occupancy issues. And I think they'll satisfy what you're talking about on both sides.
Doesn't that just qualify under the SB nine lot splits scenarios?
No, so you I I believe when there's a state law provisions, which we'll which we'll get to in a second. I think it talks about either the owner's got to occupy one of those units and then he can rent here, he can rent all the others, or they have to rent it in its entirety to one tenant.
Right, who cannot sublet it.
I remember seeing that. Is that in there? I don't remember seeing that. Yeah, we we'll we'll get to that one.
Yeah, okay, well, we made a comment on it, so it'd be okay.
So for the second ADU, it seems like that there's support for a second ADU with additional setbacks and limiting the timing of when the second ADU would need to be built.
Okay.
I think he's making notes.
Yeah. Great, so the next section.
Well, but just one more comment before we leave that. I think there's two things that we should discuss further. I think there's a fair amount of agreement on this, but I think there's two things we should discuss further. I think we should get in, examine this owner occupancy issue further. We should just talk about, well, do we not want two or three units rented? Do we not want that to happen in Atherton? I I don't, I I think we should discuss it. I don't know the answer. I don't I don't have a strong position one way or the other. I could develop a strong position, but I I haven't really thought it through, and I think we should think that through.
Scroll down.
Because it's going to have some implications. And the second is the issue of deed restriction. Do we want a deed restriction?
Yeah, but yeah, what I don't want to see, Rick.
We need to discuss that further.
What I don't want to see, Rick, is somebody said, well, I think I'm going to move to Florida or something like that. And so I'll I'll build, 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 and then I'll just rent as best I can. And then all three, four different families are there.
Building, I mean, you'd be building a house and maybe two ADUs.
And a JADU, that's four, four rentals there in your neighborhood, right next to you with different people in there and you got, then you're going to have noise issues potentially. There are going to be arguments about parking.
But that I think that's no different than a resident renting out their entire house to, you know,
Yeah.
a family.
Well, they're allowed to do that.
They have, you know, a couple teenagers and cars and stuff at the same time.
No, I don't like it.
But you made your density up four times four right there.
Right, so I mean, with this, I mean.
Well, I made my comment.
Yeah.
Whatever you got. The pink section up there, the blue section is what's proposed with respect to owner occupancy.
So I have a point on this owner occupancy thing. So HCD is skeptical of our ADU plan because they don't think they will be occupied. And I think there are expectations that we're monitoring and encouraging the occupancy of these ADUs. And so I'm a little concerned about having any restrictions on occupancy, given that we're only doing this because we're trying to get our our housing element through.
You know, our housing element requires us first first and foremost to build.
Yeah.
And they measure how much is occupied. I'm more interested in the building at this point in time, getting it approved by the building. We're going to go through hip housing that satisfies a check in the box. And so, but that's my two cents. I like I like what you have in the blue. I don't know how other people feel, but that's how I like it.
It already says that owner occupancy is not a requirement for for ADUs between now and 2025. So we can't require that till 2025 anyway.
Right, that's what the blue says.
So you're talking about after 2025.
I'm talking about what's written in blue up on the screen or down on your machine.
But that's state law.
The blue.
The state already says.
The state says we can't do it until 2025.
2025, I got it. It's an eight-year plan.
Yeah, I was answering station.
Five.
You're going to change that word to finalizing, right?
Two-year plan.
Take me.
How does that work? So if somebody moves for a year, then they can't rent unless they rent to only one tenant. So if you've, if you're living in a house and you've got a JADU or you've got two ADUs and you rent out your two ADUs, then you move, you know, on a sabbatical or for some reason you you take off for a year, which occasionally happens, then you're saying you can't rent the house. That's what you're saying.
You can't if it's before 2025.
You can only rent the house to the same person that you're renting the ADU to, but you can, that doesn't make any sense to me.
I don't think it's a temporary thing. It's that they'd be permanently, they've moved.
I think administrative, I I two things about that, the administration could be difficult as well as enforcement.
Right, okay, well, you know, we're running out of time, so we need to move on, so.
The net of it is if we went to two ADUs, we have a lot of homework to do underneath it to make sure that the the clarification of what the restrictions and what the advantages are. And and also the there'd be questions about the 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 ability to to rent it or not. So I don't know where we go with that, and it'll come back to both the planning commission.
Yeah, it's going to come back, so I'm going to gavel along. Let's move on.
What about the deed restriction component?
I was just going to add that.
Yeah, we said that we were going to have that.
We haven't, no, you said that. We haven't talked about.
That's just that second ADU.
At some point, we should talk about the deed restriction. I I do think that would be favorably viewed by HCD.
Yes.
I also, when I first thought about deed restriction, I thought there's no way we're going to require property owners to restrict their deeds. That doesn't make any sense. And then the more I thought about it, I realized if the deed restriction is a restriction that you can't rent it for more than X for 10 years, it's probably not a very big restriction because the only people it's going to restrict are people that are wanting to rent those ADUs at some rate that's a greater rate than an affordable rate.
Yep.
And most people are renting their ADUs to family members or to somebody that they have a connection with either who worked for them or or for somebody else that they know or who is a school teacher who's had some relationship to kids in school, one way or another. From everybody I've talked to, those are the most common uses of ADUs. So in those cases, it doesn't seem to me that the deed restriction is a big impediment. And if it in fact gives us benefit with HCD, then I don't really have a problem with it. But but I had to think through that before I thought, wow, it's really not as big a deal as I initially thought.
Well, we're going to, we're going to have an ordinance on all these things. Eventually, they're going to write up what what we can drink, what we can possibly get through. And then we're going to have to review it at least twice.
Right.
So but the deed restrictions for the amount of rental, if it is a percentage of below market rent, that for the next 10 years, you have to rent it to a below-market rent rental resident. That would, I think, be more favorable to HCD than if we on your your flip side, you were saying it was going to be rented at a higher rate for 10 years.
No, instead of an affordable rate.
No, we're.
They can't be rented above an affordable rate. I think that's what the deed restricts.
So it's slow or very low.
That's that's that's.
Yeah, I I think you're all on the same page there that it's a benefit to HCD and we will we'll include it in the draft ordinance that makes its way forward. Okay, thank you. Let's move on. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Let's move on. Thank you.
Okay, that's the two acre.
Sure, that's. Took a long time.
I explained this one. The next section is about efficiency units. And so, um, there are. Definitions of what an efficiency unit, um, is. And I think. We're probably just gonna go with, um, what the state code says and which is in yellow. So we might. We're thinking about taking off everything in, in blue.
The, 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 the issue here is an efficiency kitchen, efficiency unit, a kitchen and an efficiency unit is the kitchen within a J A D U, not an A D U. And the state code in yellow, uh, there have been jurisdictions that have sent their ordinances up to the state with some of this blue stuff that we've got in there and the states kicked it back.
Yeah.
And said, just have the state minimum requirements in there for the kitchen or the efficiency unit. So that's what staff would recommend we do.
All right. So do we have any public comments on that?
So not the minimum of twenty square feet or storage cabinets. So I think, Carol.
That's for a J A D U.
This is for J A D U.
We'll let her make her comment first, please. Yeah. Do you have a comment on it?
Yeah, yeah. Well, no, I'm taking it now because we're trying to close down each item, but you know, we're also trying to move on. So yes. Okay, make your comment.
Uh, you have to come up to the mic so we capture it. Sorry about that. I had faux pas.
Thank you. I think that when you are going to two A D Us on a two acre parcel plus a J A D U, that's multifamily housing.
Yeah.
Sorry. That's why it is. Think about the neighbor. Not about our goal to have more A D Us. Do you want eight or twelve cars on that lot? Two acre parcels are not that big. I have four of them across the street from me. Do you want four mailboxes? Do you want, how many trashcans do you want out there? So. The, the rule is. One A D U, one J A D U on one parcel. A two acre parcel is still one parcel. I don't think we want multifamily housing with A D Us all over.
You and I were in agreement, but others didn't necessarily agree.
Well, I have to bring it up.
I think, I think the, the logic behind it was. They could do a lot split on two acres and, you know, a two acre parcel. And then you have.
Four units anyway.
You have, well, at least four units. Uh, you have at least, you know, now you have six, uh, just like that. Okay. On a two acre parcel. So it, it just, you know, it's either six or four, you know? It seemed like with the four, it seemed more reasonable and you wouldn't do all these lot splits. What I would like to not see happen is all the S B nine lot splits. People think that just because it's a Senate bill, it's a law, that it's a good thing. And they've got really behind it. I think it's a bad thing. I think that's gonna change Atherton. More than if we. Re-zoned strategically.
Any other public comments either from online or in the room?
None online.
On the second.
I think this gentleman has something to say. Well, you have to.
Yeah, you have to.
Come, come, come here, just, uh.
Say your name.
Jude Keerick, Pacific Peninsula. I was just curious how many two acre parcels are in town.
Oh. That's a good question. I think there's some five.
A lot of discussion about, and I've done two hundred and fifty projects in town and it's a rarity when I work on a two acre parcel.
Two acres and more.
Two acres or more.
That, there's a lot more when that, that, that covers a lot more.
It does. It's just not a two acre.
Oh, two plus acre.
Well, we haven't done that analysis, Jude. I think that we should, we need to have, do that analysis.
We actually know that from the, some of the stuff we've done already. So.
No, that's available. It's a good question.
But it's, it's, it's a bunch. I mean, it's gotta be about eighty. At least, yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, we've heard public comment. We've heard our comment. Now we're moving back to where we were when I. On the kitchens. Sure. And then we're gonna get to Diana's question, please.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
We can. And his, uh, thing is in our cabinet.
I'm Lee, can I, I live. Two hundred yards that way. And we put a lot of work into this issue for our property, which I'll talk about later. But the kitchen design. It's gotta be flexible. And by saying how big the refrigerator has to be and how much vents you have to have and stuff, I'd really agree with. Dropping out all the blue stuff. Let's do as minimal requirements as we can for these things because it's hard to do in a limited space.
Okay, thank you.
So what the state is saying that we have to do.
Oh, no, okay. Let Diana ask the question. She was next.
Cooking appliance of, of all of these.
Yeah, but, um, you need to grab a, like.
On the cooking appliance, that's the only one that I actually questioned. And I almost feel we need the blue because. It, you don't want to allow people to just have a plug in hot plate.
Right.
And say that's a kitchen because A, it's not safe and there, there should be a little more than just a cooking appliance. So. I'm fine with it not being built in and all that, but I think there's gotta be some sort of definition around.
Well, I thi- I think with the efficiency units and the J A D Us, I think we'd be hard pressed to get that past state muster. Or A D Us, however, I, I think we, we're gonna want some, some meat around it. And the city attorney and I were conversing earlier about it and probably the best way to do that would be. Have the state definition of what it says for an A D U, which is eating, cooking, sanitation. Facilities, uh, and then provide such as within our code as examples, but not requirements.
So there's no safety requirements on the cooking appliance in an A D U by the state?
By the state, that's correct. That's correct.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah. No, nothing there.
That's something the fire district should touch base with.
It's, it's.
I think we want to be really careful that we don't want just a little, a little plug and play, um, kitchenette that you could.
That you have in the bath, in the bedroom.
And those, yeah, staff, staff's concern here, in this really putting some meat around what a kitchen is, is more of a staff concern than, than a code concern. And the staff concern is. Uh, multiple. One is to, to prevent the issue of a hot plate in a small unventilated space where there could be a fire hazard, uh, because that, that could happen. Uh, number two, to provide builders and developers and homeowners some guidance as to what constitutes a kitchen. It just says eating facilities. Well, what does that mean? Uh, and then third, um. To provide, uh, or to prevent, uh, a property owner, a developer from. Building an attached A D U with a access to the interior of the structure and a wet bar. And suddenly that's not an A D U any longer. That's a master suite.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think that we should be. Yeah, it should be installed a, a, a stove, like you've said. Um. But I'm not sure about the others, the other stuff, I think.
With, with efficiencies, this, what's on the screen there, we're gonna have to take out the blue. The state won't let us have the blue.
Yeah.
With efficiencies, but with A D Us, we, we need to talk about it.
Yeah, for A D Us, I think we need to have the, um, the, the stove top at least. Included. I don't know about all the other things that you're saying. We've agreed to the blue because I haven't.
But, well, again, this is for efficiencies, J A D Us, so we're removing the blue.
Yeah, I understand.
What is the distinction between an efficiency unit, an A D U and a J?
An efficiency kitchen is a J A D U kitchen.
Efficiency kitchen is only a J A D U kitchen.
Yes.
I, I thought I saw in here somewhere that said a J A D U kitchen, uh, could have a hot plate. Rather than a stove.
Well, what, what's in yellow there is what the state law has. Now, we may have another section a little further down, but.
So there's, so there's a lot of terminology from the state. So there's a regular accessory dwelling unit. There's a junior accessory dwelling unit, and then there's an efficiency unit, which is may or may not be a J A D U.
What is it? What is an efficiency?
It's not well defined. Um, it, it says that it needs to be at least a hundred fifty square feet. Uh, and these, and I think what the state is trying to do is have these very like tiny units.
It's basically a studio apartment type thing.
More of a dorm room would be my guess.
Or a tiny house.
So, but your fire marshal's gotta come in.
Yeah, so I know. I was gonna get to him when somebody gave me a break to say.
I was gonna say. Going with the state, typically there's a definition for every hang. And from what I'm seeing, a cooking appliance definition means equipment for food preparation. Such as a hot plate, microwave, toaster or toaster oven, oven or stove top. It does not include a coffee maker, kettle or bottle warmer. So it's giving a definition of what is allowed, which I'm sure that's why the state's kicking those back because it's already saying a microwave or a hot plate is acceptable to the state. What their intention is, I'm not sure. It could be the intention is it's more of like a, like an in-law elderly type unit. And so. It may not be safe to have some of those others. So a microwave might be the safer option, but it depends on really what the intent is. But. At least you can see here, there's a definition that they're gonna say anything more restrictive there.
Yeah, the, the problem, John, is that the, it's a hot plate and starts a fire and it's a J A D U. It's attached to the main dwelling unit. Then it's.
I, I understand those concerns and, but the state's using their ultimate wisdom.
Yes, I know. That's your problem.
Fire alarms, right? Fire alarms.
Correct. And a good majority of the homes are gonna be sprinklered. Um, and we have abilities to sprinkler homes if they're not, but. Typically with these additions, they're, they will have residential sprinklers, which is gonna be a great.
Yeah.
Life safety aspect for us anyway.
But, but with, there are, there are stipulations in state law that prevent us from requiring the A D U to be sprinklered.
Correct. However, we still have authority even with that, uh, law, that we have access and water issues. And so I, I am able to apply that to every single one of these A D Us or J A D Us. Um, and so majority of the time, they will be sprinklered.
But if it's, if it's something that's ministerially approved, I'm not sure you do have the authority to actually look at it.
I, I do.
Yeah, they're not us.
That is, that is my state minimum. I, I do have that authority and we do look at every single one.
Oh, okay.
So they get approval after the city approval separate? Is that what you're saying?
Fire.
Conclusions.
Fire is a whole separate process. Yeah.
After, so.
Okay. All right. Fine. Thank you.
Ask me another question.
Yeah.
It says compliance with light and ventilation. We're taking out requirements of the Atherton building code. So which compliance with light and ventilation of the state code then? And is that significantly different from ours? That would be not requiring the uplighting and some of the other stuff we have, right?
Uh, up, uplighting is not part of what would be required here, but, um, like, I think they're talking internal lighting ventilation.
Yeah. So just adding the requirements of the Atherton building code would just be a clarification. So we wouldn't necessarily have to delete that.
Okay. Get feedback on that one.
We move on. If there's any other comments.
Uh, just to answer the question, yes, most of the blue will be taken out except for the, um, clarification about the requirements of the Atherton building code. So everything else in blue will be taken out.
Well, so if we're just leaving the yellow in and we're leaving in the language of cooking appliance. And who's determining what that is?
State code is John mentioned.
Oh, state code doesn't give any guidance.
They do. He, he, he just mentioned what that was.
He just wrote it out. Yeah, and they allow, they allow hot plates.
Just like a dorm room.
So the only question I have on this is, um, on a unit larger than eight hundred square feet.
It's not, yeah, that's not ministerially approved. Then we can put our.
I know, I know. But, uh, to clarify, this, this, this would allow us to have some flexibility on the larger, larger units, correct?
Theoretically.
It doesn't say that specifically. That's why I'm asking it.
Well, I, that's a separate section down below.
As long as that's a possibility.
And the city attorney may have.
Eighty, eighty, you should have some of this in it, but J A D Us doesn't need to.
All right.
Or the small ones, yeah.
Um, so the next thing is about A D Us that are eight hundred square feet to twelve hundred square feet. And should they be located outside the accessory structure setback? Because only eight hundred square feet are, uh, can, need to be four feet.
Right. The rest of them need to adhere, adhere to our requirements.
Yes.
Does this want consensus there that anything over eight hundred goes to ten feet?
Right. There was a comment by the public. You gotta get up there so we can get it recorded. Thank you. Sorry about that.
This is probably the reason I've been here for a couple of these meetings. I've gotta pass out some things. If I could ask everybody to please take one. And then I can talk to it. Ask everybody at the table's got a copy.
This was in our building.
Four, five. Yeah, I'll pass it the other way around.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we, uh, unless you modify this, if it's.
I think I modified.
Part of our package.
This morning.
This morning.
Okay.
Modest ways. I love it.
All right. Yeah, I have one?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Did Diana?
Oh, one for Diana. That's great. Oh, she's already up on. You don't need three up there.
You have the interior things?
Yes.
All right, let's. Cause we had that before.
This.
The only question I had for you was, are you building a garage and A D U or attaching just an A D U garage?
Get by the mic. People on Zoom can't hear you.
I don't like the fact that he's pushing cars there.
Well, he's taking, he's taking.
So the, the, the core issue here, I think, is that. Uh, I have lots of paper, but I want to make sure everybody on the table has one. I, I'm not sure that they did. Okay, let's just explain what we're trying to do. Is build a new A D U. Which is twelve hundred square feet. And the reason to have one bit that big is because. The property that we live on has a lot of storage at the end of the house in what some would call the garage, but I'm not gonna use that word again. Cause garage has a lot of. Anxiety with some folks. What we're doing is taking storage from the house. And we're going to use the A D U with space. Next to where people sleep and eat and otherwise, so that an A D U will have storage in it. And. Our intention is to have one living dwelling unit, but. We're gonna give up a lot of storage as we build out the current garage into two bedrooms. And we need it. We also have a pod which never is shown on here, which is full of furniture and other stuff. And we want to get rid of the pod as well. But our intent. If you will, is to build a big enough unit. Still calling it an A D U within the max. That fits on the property. And the challenge with that then is that by being larger than the small size A D U, it would. Be closer to the side street on Virginia Lane than. The current setback of fifty feet. Now, the latest drawing, which I've just passed out to some folks, shows an infringement on the setback of eleven feet, five and a half inches. Which would mean that a thirty five foot setback would still fit. This property as designed. And if I look at. How the driveway will come in, et cetera. What we're planning in is no cars in it. So I call it storage plus living space for the A D U. Our property needs storage space. And that's what we hope to build here along with a living area. Which if someone lives there, I think they'll take advantage of some of the storage as well. So I call it one A D U. It's twelve hundred square feet. And our request in the proper process, and there's access, if you will, from the side of Virginia Lane. Is that, uh. We be allowed some flexibility. On the setback. To a thirty five foot setback. If you drew that line, it would fall within it. And I don't think our neighbors will object. I've spoken to several of them, but the issue, if you'd like to see something in writing, I could do that too. And I'm certainly open for comments.
Or, uh, let me jump in as.
Well, yeah, I would think that you'd have to go to the planning commission, right?
Right. So this would be a very typical thing to come before the planning commission as, as an exception. Um, sure. And, and, and it would, and it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be appropriate for us to act on it right now at all. So I just want to make it clear that we can't give you an answer today. Uh, because it's not a public hearing that's this notice and all your neighbors don't know about it. But the thing about it is, is that, is that if, there was nothing in this regulation that would preclude you from coming forward with that. And then it'd be an assessment on the individual lot with the individual situation. So that's, that's available to you now.
Well, I've had multiple meetings and been told that it didn't comply. And I'm here trying to find the right way to get it going. If going to the planning commission is. When could I meet with the planning commission?
You put it, you have it put on the planning commission and agenda and we'll go over it then. That's how, that's how the process works.
And after that, what would happen next?
We, it's an exception permit, correct? Or what? It's a variance application that goes to the planning commission. Planning commission notices your neighbors, has a public hearing, renders a decision.
So I've seen the variance application process. So I've seen the variance application process and it was requiring me to comply with all the building codes, et cetera. And this is what we're trying to get is the variance. I'll go through the planning commission and take your guidance from that if that helps.
A, a variance application is a request by a property owner to go beyond the requirements of the law. The commission though just has to make specific findings related to that in order to approve that.
Okay.
And that's normal for the planning commission.
Good. How do I?
Yeah, I know. I agree with that.
Yes, you can work with me.
All right, let's go. We gotta move on. Thank you for your comment. Go ahead.
You got a study session on this, right?
Yeah, I know. I gotta keep it on, on, on what we're doing. Okay, I know. We're not agenda bird.
I think on this, you should consider two exceptions to the eight hundred square foot that's exempt. And the two exceptions are when you're converting a pool house and when you're building an ADU over a garage. So in Atherton, three car garages are a minimum of nine hundred to a thousand square feet. And many of these homes that we've built over the last, the larger homes that we've built over the last fifteen years are fairly well matched out on square footage. And that really, if you limit it to eight hundred square feet, will mean that you eliminate the possibility of an ADU over a garage. So I would allow the size of the garage, no more than that, and I would make that exempt. The same thing with pool houses. We've been building pool houses for years. And many people would like to convert the pool house to an ADU. The problem with pool house is oftentimes we took four hundred feet, which you can have a roof, but no sides. And that's, that doesn't count towards your square footage. And then you had the, the structure adjacent to it. So I'll give you an example. Our last house that we built, not the current one, the one before, the pool house was seven hundred square feet. It had four hundred square feet of patio overhang. But we were matched out on square footage by five feet. So the buyer of that house would not be able to convert that, that pool house to an ADU. By enclosing in that covered patio, even though from a roof line, it's the same. You're not adding anything more to the roof. So I would consider, as I said, a, a, a larger exemption. If you are building over an existing garage, or if you are enclosing a pool house. And if you do not have enough square footage left on your parcel.
Well, I think one of the items we're going to talk about is over garages, but it's over the, for me, if it's over the garage, as long as there's a decent setback.
Well, I, I, and just to, to clarify, what we're talking about here is uh, ADUs greater than eight hundred square feet. Be located outside at the accessory structure setbacks, which is ten feet, right?
Yes, ten feet side and rear.
Pool house, that detached garage, they are already at those.
Yeah, they're at the ten foot setback already. Else they wouldn't have been able to be built.
What's being asked is to give bonus square footage for making those conversions.
Right, yeah. So in that situation that was brought up, uh, that would be, that, there would be no restriction on that from a standpoint of approving an ADU. The uh, because it's already a footprint and you know, no trees would be impacted. It's already ten feet back and all those other things. The, the, and same with the above the garage, it would be a situation where, where we'd be looking at the privacy issue and where the windows point. And whether or not there'd be trees there to keep the privacy of the neighbor. But everything else would be a compliance, would just be an application for, for something to be built. There would be no restriction on this. The, the hardest thing, I think, to constantly be balancing on all this stuff is. The, the eight hundred square feet is state mandated. So there's a lot of things around eight hundred square feet. Above that, it's, it's like another construction project on the site. And so there's questions I'm, I'm hoping to get to, like, like there's a situation in here about whether or not we require the eight foot and all this other stuff. That I think does restrict it, but that one wouldn't be restricted at all.
Well, if you're just adding an additional eight hundred square feet.
Right.
But if you're going to add.
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred square feet, that would need some.
Well, but if it's on top of the existing garage, that's already ten foot setback and same with the pool house.
But there are height restrictions.
So let's, I, I'm, uh, there's other things we definitely need to get here.
Yeah, I know. I'm trying to move us along, Eric, as I'm trying to do. All right, let's move on.
Uh, so the next.
Next one is what?
The next issue would be on double frontage lots. So when there's fronts, there's street sides on both the front and the rear. And so one of the questions is, can you have an ADU in the back and then have that as the ADU's front? And then also have a separate address? Because the way it's determined now is that even on a double frontage lot. The rear, even though it has a street side, is still considered the rear and it would still be a four foot setback.
I would think that the post office, I believe that they want it all on the way that they've gotten identified. So it would be an A and a B, as opposed to suddenly there's another one on another street, but. I don't know how we do that. The fire district has some comments on it.
So when it comes to addressing, it's actually your building official that sets addressing, not the post office.
Okay.
And the fire district has weighed in on addressing when it comes to ADUs. So we actually have a, I'm going to call it a standard. Uh, we don't have a written policy, but we have this with East Palo Alto, Menlo Park and Atherton. That for any ADUs, we take the main address and then add A.
Yeah.
And then, so I'd like to follow that same thing. And for us, it's a life safety aspect, not for fires, but for our heart attacks, choking, et cetera. Because we want to be able to access that property and that having that addressing standard allows us to know that there's multiple. Residences on this property. We've had several, like you're suggesting that ha, want add access off a different street. But yet, and it's, I will say, it gets confusing. And you can do what you want to do, but I, I would like to keep some sort of standard. Where we can maintain a good property address and access, because they are required by law to have that address. On facing the street and visible from the street, which we do. Um, so I just want to consider the whole life safety aspect and us getting to patients as quickly as possible when allowing addressing.
Okay, so that was pretty clear and that's.
Well, well, no, I, I think there's a bigger issue.
There is a bigger issue. Along that line. So I, I know there's a, there's a flag lot on my street. And then there's, it's big enough for, for an ADU, that would be much, uh, much uh, uh, easier access and safer. Off of, let's see, placeta or whatever, whatever the street is behind. And, and in fact, it, it almost looks like the house should have been addressed the other way. So the, the other thing that I'm looking at is, is when you're talking about a twelve hundred square foot uh, ADU. It, across the street in, in Redwood City, that's a house. All right, so, you know, so that's not, that, that's a, that's a normal sized house. So if that, if that twelve hundred uh, square foot ADU had an address on that street, you would know about that address, correct?
If we have the proper access and, and a street with that. But it would need to follow standards, but then I, I know it comes into the play of lot splits, et cetera. And uh, again, but it depends on how we want to provide that access. It's.
We just used the example of the Kennesys. Uh, they're proposing a new access off of Virginia. Whereas their uh, main uh, address is off of Fair Oaks. And Virginia is definitely, you know, a, a, a street in Atherton. And there's many houses. Uh, we have a resident here that's on Virginia also. And so to have another address for that new twelve hundred square foot AD.
So where, where the conflict comes from us is that an emergency happens at that parcel. But yet it has two different street addresses and somebody calls nine one one. Wherever the address is, is where we're going to show up.
Yeah, so.
And so that's kind of my concern. It's nice when that parcel has one access point and we know we can access all of the buildings and show up at the. But, and I understand it's not an easy answer because of so many things, but. I, I'm trying to streamline our life safety aspect.
And that, that's the life safety side of it. The, the land use and zoning side of it is, you've got that parcel that has two frontages. Uh, it has one main house on it and now you have that property owner who does not want to subdivide. But instead creates that rear facing ADU that fronts to that other street, gives it a separate address, puts a fence down the middle and you got two.
And, and probably has car access off that street and everything else.
Both sides.
So.
Is that, if that's okay.
Yeah.
That's, that's fine, but it needs to be, I think, a conscious land use decision.
I think you threw a little monkey in that wrench when you said, and they put a fence in between it.
Why wouldn't they?
Yeah, they might, so I.
That's essentially like subdividing the property.
Is, isn't the question whether we would allow access? I don't know what a double frontage lot is, but allow access to an ADU from the side or the rear rather than from the front.
From an adjacent street.
Well, adjacent street's a different issue.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Adjacent street.
Why do we need to decide that? Why wouldn't that go to the, to planning and then to planning commission?
Well, with the, you, it could go through that process, but feedback here helps staff craft the ordinance.
I have an opinion on this one. I think we should allow it. And I, I experienced this when I bought my house and I have two streets. I'm on a corner and I changed my primary residence to be the last one on Stockbridge. You know, so I changed my address and it was not a big deal for every, anyone. I also really think it's important that we do require signage and that we, we number things and, and when new things come. Because I really hear the issue of emergency access. So I, I want to separate those two because I see them as separate. The issue of being able to have everything well marked should be in our rules. But I do think that having, being able to determine which way it enters, you know, when you look at those lots, sometimes it's going to be better for everybody. If it goes in the other side.
Fire district already has those rules. So uh, anyway, it's five o'clock. I don't know how many more we have to do with this, but we're crawling along.
The city attorney's got a comment.
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry. Uh, I, sorry to interrupt, but just a quick point of order. We now have a majority of the planning commission present. So we're going to need Chair Lane to open the planning commission meeting as well.
Uh, Mona, the, the individual online though is not noticed on the agenda.
And um.
He's a member of the public.
Commissioner Lamb is joining online as a member of the public.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so the net of is that we're, we can continue the way we're going because.
Okay.
It had to be noticed that he was going to miss the meeting for.
Right, yeah, and George wrote.
Okay, okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem. Good point, Mona. Thank you.
But since we're halfway through our time period, maybe we should decide if we're going to. Hit the review process for the second item to another date, or we're going to stop this and we're, we're not going to get done.
No, this one was going to go until five thirty. Um, um, and then five thirty to six is the CIP one. But if we kick the second item, we need to have a special meeting between now and the seventeenth. Cause the CIP needs to go to the planning commission and may in order for it to make.
Yeah.
City council.
Yeah, we're on a tight timetable. So I'm, I'm happy to call a special meeting. We just all have to find a time that we can all agree that we would be there. Because this is going extremely slow and we're not going to finish in, in less than twenty-five minutes.
So in the, in the.
Especially if we're on, you know, tied up on items that the fire district has said what they want. But we're going to debate where you should put your, your, your address. I think we should talk about big stuff.
So there are a few items that, when I went through them, I had questions about what, basically dealing with things that we've experienced on planning commission. Uh, and, and so I don't know if you want to highlight those, then we come, when, when we say, okay. It's, it's more like what we did in the planning commission, which was the team of these questions that we wanted answers to. And, and there's some things on the, on the, on the page four that I had questions about. So if you want to do it in order, fine, or if you want to just hear the, the, the top, the top, top items, you can go either way. So that we put them on the marquee and then we work through them in a different time.
I think this is important and I think we should focus on it. And I think that it's important that we do actually have everyone have a chance to say their.
So you don't want to hear what the planning commission has to say about this?
No, I do. I just think the other side, we should have a special meeting. I think it's crazy.
Yeah, we're going to have to have a special meeting regardless, guys. I'm, I'm, I'm not.
I think we've got another three hours on this topic alone.
Okay, so we'll have another special meeting.
If we're lucky, three hours.
But, okay, so.
So what's on?
With the planning commission, that would be another three hours? And then we do finance right now? Is what you're proposing or?
Finance at five thirty.
Okay.
So what was your, what's your, are you trying to get it in now?
Getting dropped.
I was going to highlight some of the things that would be issues that we need to know about on the planning commission and that could affect both the ability to produce ADUs. And also to approve them. And so there were some things, so like on the next, next page with the tech to ma, maintain the required separation. So on a smaller lot, uh, that, uh, that might want a nine hundred square foot ADU. I, I think that could be restricted, but uh, but it's also a situation where we could do is by exception. So that's, that's the kind of thing I'm talking about where, where, um, and then also on the item about uh, the front facing the interior side or rear. Those things could be highly restricted in terms of the ability to optimize the use on a lot. So.
What, you mean windows?
Page four, no, on, on the door, on page four.
Those, you in your staff report or are you on the?
The two requirements that are on the screen, the separation requirement and the entrance requirement, that's what.
So clearly it's talking about. Create, you know, a lot of inflexibility with how to use a lot. All right, so um, the, it, there, there could be a situation where seven feet would work fine on a separation. But if there's a fire code issue, I understand that. Uh, but if there, but if it's not a fire code issue, then sometimes that's a lot probably.
I, I agree. I, I had a real problem. I read this about the interior and I was wondering what the, what was the reason behind that? Why is that even there?
You know, they could make a smaller ADU, you know? They could make an eight hundred square foot one instead of a nine hundred square foot one and get on with it. You know, there are some rules and the rules are, you know, there for a reason. Now, we can debate them, but you know, I mean. One of the things is they could make a smaller ADU on the separation. In your example that you just gave me.
All, all I'm saying is, is all I'm, all I'm saying is, is that uh, if, if that's where we want to do it, it'll just be fewer ADUs. All right.
It's a bad idea to include the facing the interior, which is the second blue one there. I do think that's a bad one. It's an unnecessary limitation. That um, in certain cases, that wouldn't, that wouldn't necessarily be the best for everyone. So I don't understand why we added that. At the time I read this, I was asking why is it even, what was the logic behind why it was there in the first place?
So it doesn't disturb the neighbors going in and out. So we're looking at a privacy issue.
So can I attempt to move, move through these two particular items? The, we can ask John if there's a fire separation requirement between buildings in terms of where the hose goes, access for fires. Is there anything in the fire code related to building separation?
It's all California residential codes, so that's a question for your.
For your building official. So we'll, we'll get that answer and move that to the planning commission as it goes through that process. If there is a building requirement, we'll put that in there.
Right.
Uh, with respect to the uh, separate entrance facing the interior of the lot for detached ADUs, the mayor's correct. The, the, the history on it, I believe, I would, I don't think I was here at that particular time, but it was really for the privacy issue. Because an ingress and egress into an ADU is going to be a point of coming and going. It's going to be a point of hanging out on the porch if there is one. And if it's in the side yard with a six foot fence, which we can get to later as well, there might be some privacy issues associated with that. So that's where it came from.
Going, what I was thinking about on that, relative to that, was on a, on a front yard ADU. Uh, it would be a natural place to have a door towards the street, right? Now, so that would be, and, and given the size of a lot, like even in, even in the presentation earlier on.
Well, there are no rules for eight hundred square feet, which can be by the street. The rest of them can't be right by the street. They have to be set back.
Yeah.
So, so it's not an issue. Eight hundred square feet, anything goes.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I don't see any point to that myself, so I think that's unnecessary limitation that many cases. Facing the interior. And we're prejudging something not knowing what's in front of us.
I agree.
And I don't know what that adds for us.
My whole thing is if we are of an ADU strategy, coming up with strategies to allow more ADUs, it has to be.
You know, if you give, if you take something where it's a special case, oh, facing the street. And you make the rule so it doesn't have to be interior facing, what about the ones that are not? You can't take a special case and make, and make a rule that applies to everybody just that way.
Well, you could certainly change that second blue sentence for detached ADUs to match the one of the first and just make it where feasible.
Okay.
Whatever degree goes for all of them. Not just your special case.
So where, where feasible is not a requirement. It's just something that should be considered as you're reviewing the eight hundred to twelve hundred square foot ADU.
All I'm, all I'm going to do is make sure that you, that we understand what we're going to regulate to.
Right, right.
And anything, anything that we don't regulate to is going to be an exception that we'll be dealing with through staff.
One off, right, right, right.
Also, the other question I had was about above carport. So we had an, we had a situation where somebody wanted to put an ADU above a carport. Which is, which is, it, it's not that different from putting it up above a garage, except that you've got a, you've got a, a bill. build a more robust carport than most people do. But from a design perspective, on some of the modern designs, they like to have just a, you know, the, the, uh, Frank Lloyd Wright look, which he didn't have any, uh, any garages at all. So there, there was not clear to me whether we're allowed to put ADUs above carports.
Well, I think we said garages so far. So far, we've just said garages. Not trying to limit ADU development, but that's what we said. And we said, you know, it's.
So why not, why not carports?
Well, we can discuss that. I, you know, I don't.
I think that's what we're trying to do because I think there are people that would like to maybe do that. And so if we don't have a rule that says, no, you can't, or maybe within these.
I didn't have a problem with it when it was in there, if you want my personal opinion.
Carport's the same as, as, as a structure or if it's attached.
It's got two sides that are solid, I think.
The same, the same requirements as a garage. So that was, that would be the question is whether or not it'd be allowed that way. And sometimes that would be something that would be, again, better for the lot because of the view and all these other things that also hit the design of a more, of some of these modern, uh, modern, more, uh, square places that are being built right now. And we had one that came board that said, hey, and, and their choice was we can put the ADU on the front lot or we can put it on top of the carport. Which would you prefer?
On top of the carport.
Yeah, you're right. You're right.
I think we want encouraged development on top of existing garages and carports, in my opinion. I do have another safety question about that. When you build that, isn't that in those retrofit houses that are now, they're putting money? Because you're building it on top of things with poles? Isn't there money right now to fix those? I forgot what they're called.
Uh, clear stories. No, not clear stories. Uh, what are they? Sauce stories. Yeah.
Are they banned or is there something around those that we should know? It's that should be in here if we allow it or not?
Right? Yeah.
I think modern construction meets earthquake safety requirements, but.
So we wouldn't have that kind of need. So then I would think it's the same as a garage, in my opinion.
Well, if that's the consensus, we could.
Yeah.
So structurally, um.
He has that comment.
I, I don't, all I'm saying is I bring it up, right? And if we have a rule on it, fine. If we don't, then we'll, we'll have the exceptions come before.
All right. That's how we got it. Okay. We're moving on. We wrote down on top of covered parking.
Are there any other policy questions in there? Parking in general. Parking. All right. So, and this is again, uh, using the leverage of a larger than 800 square foot. So right now there's no, basically, there, there's one, there's one parking spot that's, that's a lot, that's.
Required.
A lot required. It's, it's, we can't, we can't require more than one. Uh, right? That's, uh, isn't that the way it says in the, in the law? It's one parking space. Right. So the question I have is, would we want to increase that above a certain square footage? So we, I've got, my daughters live in LA and, and, and there are no more garages in half of LA. They're all ADUs and, and they, there are three cars parked in the garage or in the driveway and five cars parked on the street.
I don't think the residents want a bunch of cars on the street. That's why they put all this stuff up on the street. So I'm not in favor of it.
What I'm asking is to, would, can we require additional parking on a, above, not above 800 square feet? So, so there's no require, we can't manage the requirement at 800 square feet, but above that we could.
Yeah, I agree with you.
That's something I want to, I want to be able to, to address. The, the whole thing is, is if we can create a better experience in the neighborhood for whatever is built, whenever we can, I want, I would like to see that in the way we handle it, both in terms of easy, ease of creating it as well as making it so there's.
Isn't there a law that says that if it's within a half, half a mile of a mass transit, so anybody's a half mile from El Camino would not be required to have parking anyway. So we couldn't override that.
That is correct.
At least in that strip of housing, correct?
That's correct.
Yes, that's right.
Horses of Middlefield as well.
So it would, it would be location specific, whatever we require for this.
It's just one of those things. If we put it on the radar screen as something that we're, uh, we're, we're focused on, it could be something that would help. Right, okay.
Yes, we have a public comment, right? Go ahead.
Yes, I got in here a little late. I wasn't sure. What, what is your, uh, goal as far as finalizing these, uh, rules and regulations?
Turn them into an ordinance so that we can go ahead and then get them passed by HCD.
Again?
We have to come up with these and send them to HCD by a certain date to get them approved.
Well, because then the reason is, is that the people that are building their ADUs, and I've completed one, you get the uncertainty of what the rules are. And they changed three times as we're in the process and it cost me a lot of money. And I, I'm not happy with that, but I'm not going to complain about it, other than I think.
Well, we're trying to finalize the rules now and get approval from the state and those will be the rules, but there are laws being passed every day affecting these that change stuff. But that's what we're trying to do is get an ordinance updated and cleaned up so that we can have the rules written down that are approved by the state and those are the final rules.
But that, that process, uh, is going to be an elongated process of public hearings.
It's going to take time.
It's required to go through public hearings at the planning commission, one, maybe two. And then it comes to the city council for two public hearing or for one public hearing, a second public meeting for adoption. 30 days later, it's effective. And then it's going to go to the state within 60 days. The state gives us feedback and then we have to revise the ordinance based on that state feedback. So that entire process, my guess is sometime around October. You may have some concrete ADU laws that the town can enforce.
But you've already built it, so it's not going to affect you.
Well, I, the other question is the fees, because you've indicated in your report that you're encouraging, uh, fees to be waived, I believe. But I, again, that's an uncertainty that would be helpful to the people that are on the fence as to whether they are or they aren't.
Yeah, we will get to that when we get to that. We're not there yet, Greg. We're going through the things that they want our input on. We haven't gotten there yet. So I appreciate your cup.
I encourage you to move as fast as you can.
I'm doing my best. Yes, yeah. Another public comment. Yeah, but please come up to a microphone.
Need to weigh in here on this. Well, this is a, an important one for, for us. Um, with the orientation of the door to the street, to me should be, other than on a detached unit, which shouldn't face the side, it should be allowed facing the street or facing the side yard or facing inboard, specifically with an attached. And as long as that entrance is subordinate or doesn't take away from the front entry of the main house, that to me is part of what this, um, I think the fire department would appreciate being able to see a door to a unit when they get on the property. So to have to conceal it to the side or to the rear does not make sense to me uh, on an attached unit. Um, so anyhow, I, I encourage the commission and council to kind of ma- make that rule a little softer so we can put the door where it should be.
Attached unit. What about the detached?
I, I think that, uh, to the point about privacy, I don't think, uh, we should allow doors, uh, entry doors on the side yard, uh, 10 feet off the, or four feet off the, you know? So anyhow, but I'm, I'm talking, there's a lot of language about attached and versus detached.
Yeah.
And, um, when you, when we're talking about attached, I think it should be allowed to face the, the front. And especially a lot of these, we're talking about big properties. A lot of these rules, I think, are, once again, we struggle because we have large lots. And a lot of these rules are geared for urban lots, where you potentially could have two doors. That could be very confusing. So I think that's why there's language about side entries. So it's not confusing in a different setting.
Thank you. Yes. Oh, Carol, you have something to say?
I'm sorry. I'm opposed to that because I think what we want in Atherton is homes that still look like single family homes. And if you put another entrance on the front, then it no longer looks like a single family home. So I do not see a problem with having a JADU entrance on the side. So that we maintain the preservation of a single family home appearance.
Okay. JADU. What about an ADU? Well, an ADU, having the ADUs on the back of the property, not the front. Oh no, they take it. No, no front, no front setback. It could be right on the curb.
I think my language, as long as the entry is organized, we do a lot of home French doors, so I think they're safe in the front. So, you know.
I, yeah, we have, we have one. I think we need to give homeowners maximum flexibility. I think that we need our ADU provisions to be as homeowner friendly as we can possibly make them. I, I think the first comment we got today was a very important comment and we should pay attention to it. Because, uh, we, we, we need this code to be as simple as we can make it. And I have no confidence it's going to end up that way, given this discussion. Uh, with respect to entrance, we have to be sensitive to what, uh, can be done to accommodate the fire department because we don't want, uh, emergency, uh, respondents to be confused about where to go. But if there is more than one housing unit on a property, I think we need to give the homeowners flexibility as to where that, the entrance to that second unit is going to be. If you're building an ADU above a garage, you, you, it may not be able to, you know, be in an obvious place. It might be in the side yard. I, I think you've got to give people flexibility or else we're going to have every single one of these come before the planning commission looking for a variance and that doesn't make any sense.
I, I don't disagree, Rick, but I do think we also need to think about the neighbors. So anyway, we have a public comment on it.
Yes, uh, I do agree with.
And you are?
Minerva.
Problem?
Minerva Young. Uh, I'm living in Loughton, but I'm trying to build an ADU in the Stockbridge house we just acquired. So, uh, I agree with the council member that you should give the homeowner maximum flexibility for the designs. Because when we were doing the design phase, between the 30 feet setback or the detached ADU and also the tree protection and all the, the side, uh, side yard, uh, side setback and all that, there's almost no way to reasonably design a good ADU that can be lived in. So even for detached ADUs, I think if you have already a 30 feet setback from the main property, uh, having a door facing the front, I think should be allowed, in my opinion, in addition to the interior. And whether from the side, I think there are privacy issues with the neighbor if you are only having a four feet, uh, setback. But if you have a 10 feet bit or 24 feet setback or something like that, I think the side entrance should also be allowed. Thank you.
So before you move on to the tree protection zone, which I think is a very key one that Sung needs some feedback on, um, I want to talk just for a moment about that 10 foot uh, accessory structure garage where you're allowing that second story ADU. And then you're going to allow a side yard setback to that second story ADU side yard entry into that ADU, which is going to trigger a set of stairs at 10 feet high, looking over indirectly into that neighbor's property or that second story access to that ADU.
That's why I'm against it a hundred percent.
I think we need to make a set of specific group garages, which I was holding that comment because we haven't got to that. But that whole, there needs to be a whole section on that and rules about how you add the staircase, whether they're covered or not, where they can be. We need to discuss that and it should be delineated. And I think you should allow the whole footprint of the garage. Although someone, Carol made the example of a six car garage, that kind of stretched my thought of like, well, that's a pretty big ADU.
It's a big.
But it's, it's, it's an interesting idea. That begs the question, if it's already a structure. So anything that's built on top of an existing structure is way better than taking up new grass on the back of the house. So, so with that logic, we should try to make it as easy as possible for the garage. But I'm going to propose that that section needs to be added. And all those rules should be, you know, sedent, we, we should discuss all of those before they're.
For the, for the tree protection zone, there's been a lot of commentary and some of the public comment about allowing ADUs, uh, locally approved, 800 or bigger, to, to snug up to a tree or reduce the tree protection zone. And based on the, the foundation of that particular structure, there's ways to do that using all kinds of modern.
Yeah, they use, yeah, they use piers or something like that. And, and there's a way that we make sure that they're not going into a root there. Or they're just using a slab foundation, uh, you know, I, I.
Get broken up with the root structure.
Right. So there, there's, there's probably ways to do that, but I think it also depends on the type of tree, whether it's a surface root tree.
Right, right.
Caproot tree. And there could be some challenges there. But I don't think it would be helpful to codify with this type of footing, this is the exception we get with that type of footing. That's the exception you get. That would get.
Oh, we have to, we have to fix the housing, the, or the tree ordinance. And we're comment after your comment, George, we're out of time and we're moving on to the next section.
Okay. Uh, so what staff's recommendation is, is that we provide staff, the arborist, the building official, et cetera, some right into the code, some flexibility to allow them to address those issues when between the 800 and 1200 square foot ADU. If there's a foundation type that can be examined, process it as a exception permit of some kind that can be reviewed to allow that to occur. Not just an automatic because there is so many variables involved. Okay.
Totally agree with that, but I'd be curious, how many, how many, how, how much are we going to engage her? Is she going to be fighting now every single property owner that's going to say an exception to a tree? So if there's any of those situations that we could codify, that would be better to take that. But I agree that in the end, it's going to be the arborist who's going to have to do it, but it'd be good for us to know how often.
Arborist and the engineer and the building official to make that determination.
So you're saying that we would keep our current tree ordinance and then somebody would have to apply for variance?
Uh, uh, an exception permit of some kind.
I think the three, the tree variance needs modification already. So we.
But you're saying, let's just pawn on the tree verification, talk about it at a later date. Is that what you're saying, Bill?
Yeah, because we're moving on to section two.
Why?
Why? I don't understand.
We need to do the CIP today.
Then this, that, then we're, then we should continue this to another time.
That's what we're going to do.
We haven't addressed many things.
I know that. I've said that several times. So if you. I'm going to call a special meeting, as I said. Uh, I'm going to ask staff to send out one of these doodle things where you can say what times and dates you might be available. We'll pick one that fits everybody's, and then we'll go with that and put a special meeting. Okay? So, so we're going to adjourn this part of the meeting because we need to get the CIP thing done today. The Roberts only got 30 minutes.
Right here.
Soon, I hope. Okay?
We'll see you all again. Thank you for coming.
This is a, this is like a long journey, the first step of the long.
I agree. It's going to take a long time, Rick. What do you think? Rick is mad?
How do you think we can do this in 90 minutes?
Uh, well.
George.
I, I have big shoulders. That's perfectly fine. My only concern is this one, the, the finance one has to go.
We have to do this, otherwise we can't vote on.
That's why I stopped the meeting.
Yeah.
You did a good job.
Yeah, that's fine. And we, we can set up a.
You are being a jerk. Sometimes you gotta be a jerk. When I was the chair of the roundtable, I was a really big jerk. The public did not like me.
Actually, they all liked to go on.
Oh, they were crying.
Thank you for coming. Oh, now we're doing.
Are you on? No, you're not on.
Need to be on Zoom. As long as somebody can share the PowerPoint. And it's a pretty, uh, succinct PowerPoint.
Longer on the. He's on planning and he's. And there's Ann.
Okay.
Hey, Ann.
Can we, uh, get started with the finance section? Uh, Wally?
Yeah, he's on, he's on finance.
Yes. Um, Wally?
Wallace, Wally Sleet?
Wally Sleet.
Mr. Sleet.
Could we take our seat up here, please? You're part of finance committee.
He doesn't have a name. I guess he didn't get a.
I'm sure you have a name over here. Just come on up.
Are we having martinis after this?
I hope so. I wish, so that was already open. We need to start adjourning to a bar. We need to start adjourning to a bar and have non-brownett discussions.
I just, last night I said I'm not going to have anything to drink until after the race on Saturday. But I'm really reconsidering.
All right, we're going to start the meeting, okay? Stacy?
That's not Stacy. This is.
Oh, no, sorry, Diana?
Rick.
Diana, and if you could grab Rick?
No, don't grab him.
All right, we're going to start the meeting, okay? If you don't want to talk about this, that's fine. Okay.
Rick, Rick, we're starting the rest of the meeting. Come on, hon. Rick.
Fine, no problem. It's okay. Let's begin. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. Council and members of the public, I we're starting with the staff reports for the, yeah.
You're doing your charts, right?
No.
No, no.
Yeah, he has a PowerPoint. The special revenue funds, though, are just in the staff report, the CIP.
Okay, I got it.
He's going to go through the special revenue funds first, and then we'll move to the CIP portion of it, which are very, very, very quick slides.
He needs to do whatever he wants. Let's go.
Okay. So before you, you have the staff report for the um, our special revenue and internal service fund and the capital improvement program. This is the third uh, the third meeting of our budget cycle for twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Within the staff report, uh, as George said, there's the special revenue funds.
Do you have your mic on?
Yes.
Can I get closer?
Yeah.
I can hear you.
Okay. There we go.
Thank you.
And uh, the special revenue funds and internal service funds include the tennis fund, library fund, our equipment replacement fund, workers' comp, uh, general liability and employee benefits fund. Uh, the purpose of uh, the meeting, uh, and for the CIP, you have my staff report. Uh, the uh, special revenue funds are funds derived from special revenue sources. These are funds required by law or administrative uh reputation to uh, regulation to account for separate funds. The internal service funds are charges from various department operational budgets based on allocation charges to different departments within the general fund. You have my staff report in front of you. If you have any questions, please uh, let me know. We can go over next to the CIP.
Any questions on the special revenue portion of it?
No, we kind of talked about it.
I mean, I could talk about it, but I don't know if you want to go.
We'll do, once you move to the PowerPoint.
Go to the CIP, correct.
Now he's going through the CIP.
Correct.
So need to share your screen, Robert.
I, I'm doing that right now. Yes, sir.
Um, I, I'm, I'm, I apologize. Um, this is Ann Walker and I'm Chair of the Audit and Finance Committee. Um, but I was unable to attend in person, but I didn't do what I needed to do. So I, I think I'm just uh commenting and asking questions as a member of the public and not, not as Chair of the.
That's correct. We'll, we'll call on you, okay?
Okay, so, so does that mean I need to wait to be called on? I guess that's the question.
Yep. And I've asked Francesca to look for people who are on the committee that didn't make it, get, notify us in advance that they were going to be on Zoom and she will call your comments before anybody else, okay?
Okay, thank you, Bill.
No problem.
With that said, um, we're going to start the capital improvement program portion of the study session.
You got twenty-five minutes. Not kidding.
Yeah, we have a hard stop.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mayor, members of the council, public. Um, but we have presented uh for you in attached to your staff report and we'll go through is uh, the five-year CIP, which identifies project construction improvements and maintenance years over the next five years. Um, this is a planning tool, but what you will be act, actually acting on eventually is just the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Uh, needs are based on the various master plans that we have already adopted, which include the drainage master plan, civic center master plan, uh, bicycle and ped master plan, as well as the Holbrook Palmer Park master plan, and our pavement management system for roadway work. Uh, you are not appropriating funding by having this discussion today. You will be appropriating funding when you adopt budget. Um, so the proposed CIP includes a total of approximately eight point six million dollars uh, of various funding sources, the primary of which is the capital improvement budget, which is out of the general fund. Uh, the rest is, uh, Robert talked about a lot are um, special funds that have restricted uses. Next slide. Um, overall, uh, the CIP includes an expenditure of eight point seven million dollars, which includes seven point five million from the capital improvement fund. And they're categorized in uh, che, general categories of streets and transportation, drainage, buildings, parks and facilities. Uh, the most significant expenditures are related to the traffic safety improvement program, uh, the bicycle and pedestrian improvement program, as well as drainage projects. And um, to highlight the major expenditures planned in uh, the upcoming fiscal year related to traffic safety improvements. We have the Alameda de los Bulgas uh, traffic safety improvements, which is predominantly funded by the grant that we received from Congresswoman Esch's office. Uh, total grant was two million dollars. We have uh, some funds that were appropriated this fiscal year to get started with design. And the majority of the expenditures coming in for the next year geared towards construction. Uh, there are a few other minor projects such as radar speed feedback signs and other traffic control devices. In the bicycle and pedestrian improvement program, uh, we have uh, the largest project is the Selby Bicycle Lanes Improvement Project. Again, funding for design was initiated this fiscal year, uh, with the majority of funding coming next fiscal year to gear towards construction. Um, we have a project that was previously identified to improve pedestrian safety and accessibility at the Stockbridge-Alameda intersection. Um, within the budget we proposed is a hundred thousand dollars towards the implementation of rapid flashing beacons. Um, it's the council's pleasure as to if uh, they want to discuss um enhancing that towards a hawk beacon or other major safety or major, yes.
You could not fund the installation. This is just for planning?
No, for the rapid flashing beacons, that project actually was pretty much already designed. Uh, we applied for a grant um, through uh, CCAG. Weren't successful. It would, it was a joint project initiated between us and the county. The county was doing the design work and we were partnering the complete construction. And so for the rapid flashing beacons, that is something that a hundred thousand dollars should cover our portion of it. We will also be seeking a potential partnership from the county to fund the remainder.
So what is, what is, what is our safety team saying that they would like to have? They feel that a hawk, a, a flashing beacon is satisfactory or that we need a hawk beacon?
What's the difference? I'm sorry for those.
So rapid flashing beacons are similar to what we have at the Glenwood and Middlefield intersection. Glenwood and um, and Middlefield.
So you push a button?
You push a button, it light, no. It, it, it flashes strobe lights.
Th- these are, these are pedestrian signs on the side of the road that flash.
Yeah, there's one on Valparaiso, there's one on Glenwood. Um.
No, it's, it's on Middlefield.
On Middlefield at Glenwood.
People couldn't cross Middlefield and there wasn't even a crosswalk.
Oh, it ends in a line.
No.
The Slidewood.
Well, it's Glenwood.
Glenwood.
So it's not a light, it's just flashing on either side. I know if I'm driving, do I slow down or do I stop for it?
Stop, that's the law.
So if I'm a driver and I see the flashing things, I stop for the pedestrians.
Yes, versus what you see on El Camino, which is the Hawk Beacon, which actually stops lanes.
Literally stops.
With a red light.
Okay.
Most people don't just drive through it.
The, the hybrid.
Don't let me see you do that.
The, the Hawk Beacon is considerably more expensive than.
That's what I was thinking this was. Because I think that would be a better solution than this. Because people are going so fast on Alameda that, you know, and it's, it's a, it's a difficult.
So how much is a hawk?
Um, no, I think we're going to estimate that we're going to need to put forward about eight hundred, but we'd also have to coordinate with the county because it's a shared intersection. And so we already have their buy-in on the rapid flashing beacons, but it's the council's pleasure if you want us to start investigating the Hawk Beacon option versus moving forward with the rapid flashing beacon.
Rick has a comment. I'll let him go first.
I, I, I think we should investigate the Hawk Beacon and I think we should talk to the fire department about sharing the cost with us. Uh, they will want an override on that. That's very close to Station Four. Uh, they split the costs with us uh, on the one at Almond draw on ECR. Uh, and I, I'm sure they'll want an override on it, uh, which I think we should give them. They split the cost with us and.
This is not just.
It will cost us more.
It's at Stockbridge and Alameda.
Yeah.
Stockbridge and Alameda. That's the one we're talking.
Stockbridge and Alameda.
So, so the, the reason that the fire district supported the one on Almond draw is their override allowed them to turn it red to stop cars or so they could get out of Almond draw onto ECR. There's not that same.
Synergy there. No, it's not.
So it may not be asked. It's worth an ask, yeah.
Yeah, we should ask, but I think the question is, how long the, do you think it would take to get approval to put in a Hawk Beacon? And then, because that would then say, well, maybe we should plan the Hawk Beacon maybe next year, but put the flashing beacons in now. So we're providing some safety, but I agree with, you know, with Rick. I don't, and even Elizabeth, I do not believe that the flashing beacons on a fast-moving road are as effective as the Hawk Beacon. The Hawk Beacon is so much better. And, and we think that that's really a safety issue. I mean, I, I think that that's the best thing. We shouldn't have done it on Glenwood, but it was too expensive.
Have we done a trap? Did we do a traffic study? Because that corner is affected by the school at three o'clock. The, the high school, yeah. There's, so right there, there's literally traffic at a stop at three o'clock there. So going along that way. So it is worth spending two minutes thinking about how the traffic, how it impact all of that. I don't know.
If we went forward with a Hawk Beacon, we'd have to do that analysis.
But have we, we did it before? It seems to me that we talked about the traffic on the school.
Traffic analysis on Alameda as part of the grant, but I don't think it addressed the Stockbridge intersection. It really looked at like.
If, if I recall, the Alameda study that we did actually recommended a full signal.
Yeah, yes.
Full signal?
Yeah. And so as far as priorities for signalization, it was way down on the town's priority list. Um, and so what we're talking about is at this point, pedestrian safety. If you want, I mean, you're certainly open to have the discussion of whether that's the rapid flashing beacons, a Hawk Beacon or a full signal. That's your, your call. That, that's part of the traffic safety project that we had. That, that's part of the ESU project.
Yeah, right.
And so that is going to slow down.
It'll platoon cars.
It'll platoon the cars.
It'd be what?
It'll, I'm sorry. It'll, it'll break. You're right. It'll pick up the cars.
Yeah, yeah, right.
I think he said platoon the cars.
Yes.
If we had to pick between our lights, that, and we only could afford one, I certainly wouldn't put it there. I live in that neighborhood and on uh, on Alameda and um, and not Stockbridge, Atherton, no, Selby Lane and uh, El Camino is absolutely deadly and that's in the walkway for a school. That one should be number one if we only have a limited budget.
Yes.
But if we're, I know what we're, I know that's not what we're talking about now, but if we only have enough money for one, we should put it where it's really needed and then leave this to be flashing lights. I know Elizabeth's not agreeing with that, but I mean, people died at that other intersection. It's not even on our list. I don't understand.
So, um, the Hawk Beacon at Selby and El Camino is in the CCAG a grant proposal that was approved but not funded. And hopefully will be funded at some point. Uh, the uh, the issue of safety at Stockbridge, I, there, I think there's several issues. One, I, I don't think there's a crosswalk there, is there?
There is no current striped crosswalk, but the county put in accessible ramps on their side of the road. And so what we would, because we don't have any sidewalk and they do. And so where we would propose to have the actual crossing is in the county because we can't really build accessible sidewalk and ramps on our side. And so that's, that's why it's a joint, it'll have to be a joint effort.
Put flags and banners on either side of Alameda uh, because that's an uns, intersection for pedestrians. So I think it's right that we do something. I, my proposal is that we should coordinate with the county and put in a sidewalk right away. That's a relatively easy thing.
They, they already have it on their side. Crosswalk.
Yeah.
So our concern is putting in a crosswalk without having any additional safety measures is actually going to hinder safety because people have a false sense of security crossing just because it's a striped crosswalk.
I, now they've got flags without a crosswalk.
Yeah, I know. What we should do, uh, this is just my two cents for the rest of the council to consider. I think we should go forward with the, with the Hawk Beacon study, plan on doing that, but we need to spend a hundred thousand dollars on the flashing beacon now. The residents want something, they're taking matters into their own hands. The county has already done something. We need a crosswalk there to help with some protection. And if, and I agree with you, without the flashing beacons, it's not a crosswalk. And our previous chief said he wouldn't approve a crosswalk if we didn't have something more. Which, and I agree with that because it won't get the, the, the driver's attention. So.
Yeah, but, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, uh, well, we're not in public comment yet. She's in public.
Stupid question.
I have a comment. Then use our flashing beacon somewhere else?
Yeah.
I was going to suggest exactly what you suggested. So I'm with you. I think we, a hundred thousand dollars to address a problem quickly is that
I agree.
we should do it now.
I agree with that too. Then I follow question was, can we, we pen the, spend a hundred thousand, can we then use it somewhere else later if we get the other thing put in? Like, can we take it out and use it somewhere else?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna put the flashing beacon in.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you.
Can we use the flashing beacon?
I thought you said.
She's asking if you can move the flashing beacon after it's deployed onto another street.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's a possibility of relocating.
Yeah. You still have to do electrical work and stuff like that. Okay, Ann, you had a public comment?
Uh, yes, I do. Um, my husband and I have both been concerned for many years about that particular intersection uh, at Stockbridge and and Alameda de los Bulgas. And so I, I have a question for information, which is how much more would it cost to put in a real four-way stoplight at that intersection? It's an extremely dangerous intersection. I'd be willing to bet there have been a number, not of just pedestrian, um, you know, incidents, but I bet there've been uh, other car incidents because of the way the geography is and the way you're coming up a hill and you can't see who's coming over to the other side. And I totally understand that, that it's difficult because we have like three different jurisdictions we're working with, but I, I just, I, I, you know, as, 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 as a citizen of Atherton and, and of humanity, I just think we really need to make this a high priority and, and if it, if we could possibly put a stoplight there, I mean, if you think about it, going north on Alameda, okay, there's, there's kind of what I consider a ridiculous stop. Okay, there's, there's kind of what I consider a ridiculous stoplight between there and Woodside Road. It's ridiculous because all it does is let people get out of a really small residential area. And it's just kind of a pain in the neck, right, but. The Stockbridge, that is a four-way intersection, lot of people crossing it, a lot of bikes, a lot of potential, um. Uh, uh, car accidents and I, I guess I would like to really raise it in terms of priority for Atherton. To put a real, really truly four-way stoplight there, and that's all.
All right, thanks, thanks, Anne, okay. So we, we've heard some public comment, you know, I, I think planning to do the Hawk, but do the flashing crosswalk right now. Cause we have the money for it and we've got approval with the other jurisdiction, that's my two cents. Okay, the rest of the council agrees with that, so we'll move on. Thank you, Anne.
Okay, so additional, um, significant upcoming projects, uh, related to biking pedestrians. Uh, include the complete street gap closure project that we have, um. Received the TA grant for, which, um, we just received the signed agreement. And so that, uh, initial planning study will, will start. Uh, in the coming fiscal years, we're gonna be seeking money to move that project forward to initiate design and environmental studies on. Uh, we have our current efforts on Watkins Avenue. Uh, for the pedestrian improvements and then we're planning on, um, updating the bike and pet master plan. Which was adopted about ten years ago.
That's the Watkins Avenue Ed improvement.
Oh, I'm sorry, so the Watkins Avenue Pet Improvement Study is to look at the possibility of providing pedestrian access. From Dinko Spiel Station Lane to El Camino. So tying into the existing walkway that we have, uh, right by the train crossing and taking that up to El Camino. And then we've had on our master plan, the implementation of bike lanes on Atherton Avenue as well.
Can I ask a question about the bike head master plan update? What does that entail? The plan seems very good to me already, so I'm just curious why.
So, what we would be able to do, what we need to do is say, we've checked these boxes, we've completed these projects. Re, relook at our priorities. And any other needs that we may have. And that's gonna be both from the pedestrian access aspect as well as bicycle. And so we'll be able to recognize the accomplishments that we've made over the last period of time as well as. Look forward as to where we want to be moving forward.
For me, more importantly than even those things, that plan is ten years.
That's what I mean.
They're all George, don't just point out that.
Estimates for the projects that are in there are equally ten years plus.
I agree.
So as we go through and look at those priority projects, we'll be able to update those estimates.
Okay.
Uh, before we leave bike peg.
Yeah.
So, um, it's very confusing, cause money doesn't get used. Years is already approved and then just gets rolled over and doesn't get addressed, so. I understand the bike ed improvement study, uh, to look at, how do we improve the pedestrian? Area on Watkins from, uh, Dinkersfield Station Lane to El Camino, I think that makes sense. And then we would need money in the next year to implement that project. Which, um, we, you know, I, I think that that's a significant cost. Where, if, if we decide to put in a sidewalk on one side of Watkins Road from Dinkersville to, to ECR, which. I think is a life conclusion of that study, that's gonna be expensive. And I don't think we have enough money in that, that, this is for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah, so the study would happen in twenty-four, twenty-five, so not this coming fiscal year.
In our projection, then in twenty-five, twenty-six, we'd need to put in like a million and a half dollars or something. For that cost.
Right.
It's, it's a significant cost.
I think there's two fifty or something like that.
So that's one comment, my second comment is, there is a pedestrian improvement. Issue on Watkins from Dinkersfield to the entrance to the park. Which we've talked about a number of times where we've got that big curb right now and that very rough surface. Uh, between Watkins and the channel that people walk on. And, and I think in the current fiscal year, we have money that was allocated to address that. But, um, but I, I don't think it's completely redoing.
And so the conceptual on that was completed by our consultant. And brought forth to the bike bed committee for their input. Uh, we were looking for a window to bring the recommendations to you for feedback.
And so, so, so from your perspective, has the study for bike, for ped, bike. As whatever it is, I think it's probably pedestrian improvement from Dinkersville to the entrance to the park.
The, you say, the recommendations are there to be presented before we complete the design.
So it's close to being done, in terms of the cost, most of the costs are in, that's what I'm.
The, the cost estimates.
But there's gonna be a cost to implement whatever gets.
And we have money in our budget, I believe, to implement the basics of what's in the current fiscal.
We're under contract, as long as we're under contract by the, the current fiscal year to do the work, it's this fiscal year.
And how much do we have in the current fiscal year?
I think between that and the fencing money, I think it's about two fifty. Between, I mean, cause going along with that is the fence.
Okay, and I just am concerned that from a cost person, the two hundred and fifty thousand to completely redo that curb. And essentially build a sidewalk of some form.
Okay, I, I'm gonna say that there are recommendations that the bike and ped committee have in terms of what to do. And when we come and bring it to you, you'll have a full opportunity to discuss the different options. You may or may not agree with the rec.
Bike ped didn't want sidewalks.
Um, Robert, I'll be real quick, cause I know we're running out of time.
Okay.
Sorry, Stacy.
So.
Well, if I could just say something real quick, I think coming out of Dinklespiel and crossing over in. Onto Watkins to get on the far side, especially with that hump. It could be problematic for a smaller child who can't see over the hump. Or see clearly that there's a car coming on the other side. I believe that this is a candidate, should be looked at as a candidate for a flashing beacon where you have. One flash on, on one side of the tracks and the one on the other side, somebody pushes the button because it could be a problem. And so I do think that, um, I would ask that you look in that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask you for clarification a little later.
I will, all right, be happy to.
Okay.
All right, let's move on.
So moving on, um, we have, uh, you know, funding for, uh, our pavement maintenance program. Which includes grinding and overlaying streets, digouts and cap seal. Um, I think you're all familiar with those projects. We're going, uh, so on the drainage improvement program, um, there are a couple of projects. One is the extension of project that was initially funded this current fiscal year.
I'm sorry, that's supposed to be west of Alameda.
Okay.
I typed that in.
Okay, so we have a project that we were supposed to have initiated design of the relining of the Atherton Channel west of Alameda. This would provide the, um, construction funds. Um, implementation of some green infrastructure as well, associated with our capital projects. As well as, uh, a programmatic allotment in the event that we are successful in completing the, uh. Getting the issue grant. So, uh, design, construction follow, construction following, I apologize, my voice is shot. And then, um, as directed by, uh, the council, we have money in. Next fiscal year to look at long-term solutions on Elk, El Camino Real.
Thank you, if you, if you wanna move one forward. The twenty-three, twenty-four, that's a positive question for the council.
El Camino, isn't there both a study and a, uh, whatever? The drainage solution.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's the following fiscal.
I, I believe you got this.
The study is listed in twenty-four, twenty-five with the work in twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah, so if you wanna move that forward by, move that study forward a year, then the work might be done sooner, but it's.
I think, well, I think we should move ECR forward, I, I'm sorry, I think the ECR should move forward because of the fact that, that, uh. You know, that affects a lot of residents, we get calls on it every time it rains. Yeah, okay, sorry, I cut you off.
So the, the, the study amount is about.
Thank you.
The study amount is about two hundred and fifty K, so we could include that in the current, or the coming fiscal year. And do that analysis and then do the work in the.
The sooner the better, in my opinion.
Yeah.
And again, the goal with that project is to look at it from a long-term solution. That, that blends into whatever the solution's gonna be with the gap closure project, which is a little bit of speculation, so we're gonna have to work that out.
Well, I'd like to see it happen this year.
Closure project, we haven't agreed to do that.
We, we have not agreed to do that, but. Something needs to be done on El Camino and it, whenever we do it, we're gonna have to do a green infrastructure and other stuff along there too with this project.
Yeah, if you can tie it in with the green infrastructure requirements, that'd be even better.
That's a.
Be awesome.
And then, um.
Then, what? Did we all agree with pushing it forward?
Yeah, I agree.
Alright, great.
Alright, we're moving on.
So the last, uh, couple of programs, we have the park improvement program, um, as you, um, know, we need to replace the playgrounds. Uh, play structures, so we have some money allotted for design in the upcoming fiscal year with construction following. Um, and, uh, just some general assessment and maintenance. Uh, as well as out-year dollar amount for, uh, solar energy and resiliency as the council is suggesting.
People don't wanna talk about this. I feel like we're being pushed through this and we're not being able to focus on anything.
Supposedly there's a parking.
But it, I understand, but this agenda was not an intelligent decision, we had too much stuff on this agenda. So let's just have a special meeting and deal with this, a special meeting.
Alright, well, we'll have a special meeting and we'll, we'll continue this meeting to that meeting as well.
No, make it a separate meeting, that's, this is a whole separate item.
Can we go another two minutes from this time?
And we're not getting through either one.
Okay, alright, well, we have.
Five minutes left on the CIP.
Yeah, but, but we should walk through the items, I, I don't, if you just wanna, I mean, I, I'll just vote against it, it's okay.
No, we wanna make sure that you're in consensus, especially on some of these.
Then we have to talk about each item, so the playground, we're.
Okay.
We're proposing two hundred thousand to study a new playground, this doesn't have anything to do with the repair of the.
Right.
Brand new, brand new.
Um, and then, uh, five hundred thousand dollars for the replacement.
At this point, without a full estimate of what the community wants, yeah, yeah.
The estimate, but.
And the layout and the design.
May not be enough.
It, it may not be.
Because in fact, when we're doing the assessment, we may decide, we really don't wanna just. Replace the middle portion of that playground. We wanna replace the top section also, because that's also old.
Yeah, are we going to have a, a resident-led community outreach committee to help make these decisions?
Oh, the, the objective of when we, when we talked about this at the last meeting, when we ran through the fiscal outlook was to do. Uh, uh, facilitated process with, uh, Park and Rec Committee and Public Input and Engagement. To help design what that looks like, that's gonna take a period of time, then we're gonna develop that design, that's gotta come to council for approval. And then we'll have an estimate for the project.
Yeah, the out-year numbers are gonna change, for sure, some things are gonna go away and other things are gonna grow. And we're gonna have to figure out what we need to cut because this, you know, doing something like this is very, very important, I hear about it all the time. And I'm sure all of you do.
So, the only other big number on there is the solar and energy resiliency improvements, and that was a conversation we had during the fiscal outlook. About adding, uh, battery backup or generator solution to the pavilion, adding solar on the pavilion or some other solutions.
Is there anything else you would like to go back to, Rick?
More and more getting deployed here as we're sitting.
I have to say that, that's a yes.
I think he's being kinder with his coughing fit than me.
Well, we can always come back, but, you know, we don't wanna alienate council member Nagoya.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I agree with him, that we are really blasting through this and, you know, there's more to discuss.
Well, it's because his committee meets here and George said he needs a half hour to rearrange the room.
Oh, it's George's fault again.
That's what he told me, we gotta clear this room at six o'clock, now it's six oh five. So Rick, did you wanna go back to anything else?
Uh, if, if, if the solar item is, study it, I, I think the cost is gonna be a lot more than that.
Yes, sir.
I think for sure. Right, are gonna be more than what we've got here, but, um.
Yeah, that's an out-year project, so.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything on any, any previous charts, do you think we rush through?
Uh. I think, I think we rush through, I mean it.
Well, I'm happy to bring it up and sit here, that's fine, it's just gonna impact your meeting.
Well, I think we're gonna deal with it again, right?
The, uh, in terms of the budget process, the CIP project, which is a big part of this, goes to the planning commission, they have to. They have to approve it for consistency with the general plan before the council can adopt it. And you're gonna see it again after the planning commission sees it at the first study session in June as a full budget document. And be able to make comments and changes.
Twice more.
Once more, actually twice more.
Study session and then.
And for adoption, yeah, so technically twice more, yeah.
So I think at the study session, we can reconsider it, I think we should give ourselves enough time. At the study session to really walk through these again, one by one.
Yeah.
I mean.
Then, can I, can I make a suggestion, because it is, it is a little bit frustrating from the staff side, one. Every agenda we prepare, we have to do that a week or so in advance of the meeting. Prepare the staff reports, put all the information together, get that out, so we're working seven days ago, is what you've got here, so. And there's a lot of topics on housing that are gonna be very important to have conversations on. So if we wanna set up special meetings, rather than have Thursday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Why don't we just consider every Wednesday, four o'clock for a while, as a tentative special meeting? Because these items on this agenda, we've got equal number of items on the next agenda, equal number of items.
Okay, alright, well, if everybody agrees to Wednesday, every Wednesday, that means we'll be here a week from today, but. Um, I, you know, I'll just tell you, the rest of the stat, you know. I went through every one of these things with George in my one-on-one session, that's what those sessions are for, I hope everybody makes them. If not, fine, we're happy to go through them in detail and our staff will be well-prepared, but if, so we'll have, we'll have another session. Study session to finish this up, because the room needs to get squared away for Park and Rec.
And, and so when we do that though, just to, to make sure everybody's on the same page, the agenda for next week has to be prepared tomorrow. The staff reports have to be written tomorrow, so there's just not a lot of time.
Well, we, well, I think next week, next week, I think we do the planning because we already, we didn't even get through it.
Right.
So we can do more, the, af, the week after our, our council meeting, we can do another one. Uh, on finance.
Uh, no, you can't, cause that's the planning commission meeting that's gotta approve the CIP.
So, well, then we'll find another one, then we'll doodle and find out when people are available for the second period.
I think you're covered on the finance one, cause you got a study session on the first week of, or the first Wednesday of, of June.
We can reconsider it.
Alright, okay, in detail, we want more detail, I guess, is what I'm hearing.
I would advise, uh, staff as you go through this and, and revise it. Be more generous in the out-years, I mean, I, the out-years don't really matter, right? I mean, we're really focused on the next fiscal year budget.
Right.
And we're, we've always been. Kinda conservative on the out-years, but if they're like, for example, we've got this, this place. Structure, out-year cost, we don't exactly know what it's gonna be until we. structured out-year cost, we don't exactly know what it's going to be until we've done the studies. I'd be more generous in the amount.
Well, I think.
Budgeting to those out.
I agree with you.
Then less because I just think from a council perspective, it's really good. I, I like the idea of one year doing a study and then the next year implementing that uh, and budgeting for that. That, that's a good thing for us to do. It, it helps us sort of understand the way things are flowing. And I think that, that's you're, you're starting to do that in a lot of different areas. And I think it's good. It helps. It helps me to like look at, okay, Watkins from Dinkersfield to the entrance where we did this study one year, then we were and implemented the next year. And we've got a more significant cost than patient. But I think it's better to uh, err on over allocating for that than under allocating to that. And we've got the money in the, in the general fund to do it. So uh, and we know money gets pushed from one year to the next year. So those out-years don't really matter. We know they're, you know, they're going to change.
Yeah. We just need to plan and move things around. That's all. And but I think that the question is when we're doing a study, being more generous in the out-years, I think is a very pertinent question or uh, item to, to make sure that staff is doing that. And when we make our out-year planning, we, we actually are as realistic as we can.
Let's just give ourselves time in the next study session when we're going to go over this so we can really refocus on.
But we also need to bring the climate action plan to the council uh, for review and comment. Um, and that's an involved and engaged conversation as well.
When does that have to be done?
That was going to be the same meeting as the uh, full budget on the first study session in June.
Well, we'll see how detailed the finance stuff gets to be. And then we can put that after that, but that'll probably need go in, that'll probably go into June.
We just have to realize we're going to have to devote and commit to a lot more.
Right.
Meeting. Yeah.
Sorry.
Um, you know, it's just the stuff we have to do.
Can we also maybe talk about moving Parks and Rec to a different location for their meeting? Or something like, it seems crazy that we have this hard stop for a southern meeting when we're talking about like.
Well, I, 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 I agree. The study sessions were originally set up with a hard stop, four to six, only two items on the agenda. We will, we needed to be done by six. Council didn't really want to call them regular meetings. They were just going to be special meetings. And, and if we didn't have anything, we wouldn't have meetings.
People even left in the middle of them at six o'clock.
At six o'clock. So that, that's, that's the way they used to be. So if the council has a different perspective on it, I am bringing an item to your agenda on the 17th to talk, to set meeting times, the regular meeting at six o'clock, since we're doing it as Zoom. Currently, the ordinance still says seven. So we need to change that uh, to make it consistent. So you get to have that conversation on May 17th as well.
So you want to have a meeting on the seventh?
So in our, uh, in our ordinance, uh, it says our regular meetings start at 7:00 PM.
Oh, yeah.
You changed it only for the pandemic. So I need to update the code to state that it's a regular meeting time at 6:00 PM. And then, so if you want to have that conversation, then also about study sessions, we can do that.
Do we have to put the meeting time in the ordinance?
It is in the ordinance.
Just make it.
Eliminate it or.
I think everybody's used to it now. It's temporary because there was comments that people are used to seven o'clock. Now they're used to six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we all wanted it at six, but do we need, if we don't have to have the meeting time in an ordinance, let's get it out of the order.
But that's still an ordinance. So I have to bring that back.
So let's change it.
Go with it.
Government is wild. And so that, one last thing to answer, Ann, uh, and uh, Yvonne Walker's comment online, she has a question about the 300,000 and other supplies and materials in the library. Uh, that's all she's mentioned, but just uh, to clarify what that is, that is actually our set aside fund for the library fund that we use for anything pretty much at the library that the town wants to set aside that for is kind of the replacement, equipment replacement fund that we're taking off the top of our donor funds and putting into the library fund.
And this one, 200,000 was for the replacement fund. A hundred thousand was for like canopies, tables.
Canopy table. Exactly. Yeah, that sort of thing.
The spaces, improving the space.
Okay. I think just for the next one, you, you just list things in a little bit more detail, give some more examples. I think it would be satisf- satisfactory to the rest of the people and and I encourage you to go over these with George in the, you know, next, next study, next one-on-one session with them on next Tuesday or Monday.
Right. Happy to.
Can I ask a question that is from this slide? When are we getting the pickleball study results?
The pickleball survey, we're going to be closing that at the end of uh, May. And so far, uh, Walt Robinson just asked me earlier about what the results were so far. And so as of this afternoon.
I just got mine in the mail.
Yeah. Yeah, I did too.
Uh, there were, as of earlier today, overall results are leaning in support of pickleball and the conversion of one court of the six existing courts. Eighty-five percent of the respondents thus far are Atherton residents. Of the total respondents, seventy-six percent currently play pickleball. Only 30% of the respondents are tennis key holders and 82% favor adding pickleball options to the park. Factoring only Atherton residents, 78% currently play pickleball, 30% are tennis key holders and 83% favor adding pickleball options to the park.
How many responses have we?
Two hundred and thirty. All right. So I'll, I'll, in this Friday's email, I'll put greater summary for the.
Adding pickleball options to the park, there's a whole bunch of options.
There was a whole bunch of op, there was a whole bunch of options, but out, out of that 230 total result, uh, that the favorable one was converting an existing court.
Wait, 83% want to convert an existing court?
Uh, it was.
Popular.
Yep. Eighty, eighty-two percent favorite. Uh, no, I'm sorry. Uh.
Include actual tennis players who are using. Yeah, I know, but.
It does.
Thirty percent or eighty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the most popular response was converting an existing court.
And exist, one of the five courts.
One of the six.
It's clay, the clay court is included. Could be the clay court.
Yes, yes. That was the top option.
And then, and then I also reminded George that the, the Park Foundation had, had, had been discussing putting money from their fund to re-convert the handball court and then have the town just add the equipment. So they would do it and it would be outside the prevailing wage.
Okay, that's a different issue.
Well, they would build the new court.
For pickleball?
Yeah.
Oh, I, at the handball.
Yeah.
So if the council opted to move forward with pickleball as part of the CIP project, we could collaborate with the foundation. And if it was going to be their project and their project funded, it would be the Little League project where it was done by them, no prevailing wage contract, donation to the town went done.
Same with the event garden, you know.
When will we have to decide this for it to be included in the CIP?
You could put it in at any point. So we can continue to have the conversations with the foundation. And if they solidify that that's what they want to do, then we'll bring that to the council. And then if you wanted to add money to the CIP, if we wanted to do it because they said no, you could do it at that point.
We have to do what's right for the, for the residents, but we, if we can separate them, I think that that would be a good idea. But we'll see. All right.
Right.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Anything else, Rick?
Can you help with the tables?
We don't, we don't need to move the tables, but we do have to pick up all the signs and placards and.
Okay.
And that's something we can.
Get help.
We'll take it.
Okay. Motion adjourned. Bingo. Thank you all for your patience. Uh, you know, I was trying to move this along.